Mr. Placko, can you please call roll?
Lori Kuniski.
Here.
Linda Grassy.
Here.
Denise Booster.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice All right, so earlier today Judge Bartolata of the Lake County Court of Common Pleas, Probate Division forwarded a copy of a judgment entry appointing Dennis Keeney to the open board position. I've asked Mr. Placko to include a copy of the judgment entry in tonight's minutes. At this time, Mr. Placko will give the oath of office to Mr. Keeney.
So I'll essentially read the oath, please respond. I do. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Riverside Local School District, Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office until your successor is elected and called.
I do.
Congratulations. I'll have you sign this.
All right, so welcome to everyone. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the Board agenda. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 27, 2024, July 2, 2024, July 3, 2024, July 5, 2024, July 9, 2024, and July 18, 2024. Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Denise Booster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Upstain.
Lori Kuniski.
Aye.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that brings us to special reports.
Okay, I do have one tonight. I'm going to go over a summary of our focus groups we had come over the summer for the facilities group. But before I do that, we did have a swearing in of a new Board member, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Harden and thank her for all of her services. And what's a thank you party without cake? So we're going to take a brief break and have some cake and celebrate and thank you for your 11 years of service to the school, more than half of them as president, which is something to say. And I was introduced personally to Mrs. Harden when she was roped into being the Kids Committee Chairperson. We worked closely to pass that issue. She's guided us through a lot of hard times, has her name permanently on two of our elementary schools on the plaque that's up there as president, which is something that is, you know, it's a legacy that we'll live on in this community to really count build upon and something to really be proud of. And all the work that she's done throughout, always been approachable, always kind of had a helpful hand, and really taken that side of both sides of the issues, kind of making sure that she puts the kids first and always kind of moving forward. So thank you for your service. We do have cake, and we do have a little brief token of our appreciation from the district as well for it. It's not a T-shirt with a "may or may not made up for this."
(laughter)
Thank you.
So many ears.
Jen, you have to cut the cake. I should review it to us.
We should take a picture. Okay, Chuck, we want to take a picture of Campbell.
Yes.
By the way, it was out. Wait. He's somebody who forgets who she is.
Awesome.
Yay. We'll cut it for her.
That was Nick.
We allow people to grab a piece and they'd like a piece while we...
Oh, I was going to, yes, serve it.
Have to supply it, Eddie.
Yeah. And hand it out.
Eddie remarks.
Yeah. Okay, Melissa. Right here. No, I just want to say thank you. I mean, thanks to the community for giving me three, electing me three times, giving me the opportunity to serve. You know, I, there were some really rough years, 11 years, but I wouldn't have changed it for anything. I will be eternally grateful to Belinda for, she helped guide me to when I started on the Board and not only as a friend, but as a mentor. Could not have done it.
You know, I will miss you.
Same. But no, I had the great opportunity over the 11 years to work the entire time with Mrs. Malacher, with Mr. Schlick. We've had all 11 years together. Got to be a part of hiring Mr. Placko, which was awesome, and Dr. Rotino. Lori, it's been so awesome to watch you, especially coming your own as a Board President, as a Board Member, and you're amazing. You're going to continue to do amazing things.
Good examples.
I very much hope that this Board can find a really great way to continue to work together for the kids and for the community and not for politics and continue to try to do all the right things for this community because it's what these kids deserve and it's what our staff deserve. So I'll be forever grateful for it and always Riverside's biggest cheerleader. Thank you, guys.
I would just like to thank Jen. For always coming prepared, for always showing up for, oh, he's doing the hard work. So much. I always just saw you twice.
You're glad you still live, right?
I was really nervous about this.
And Jen, can you introduce your family because they were all part of this.
Oh, yeah. My daughter Campbell.
Hi.
My husband Gene, my son Colin, and my son Kyle.
I always feel like I should be the one one who does it.
You should.
I should be, but...
Thank you.
Get your free button.
I know.
All right.
It's very tough to interrupt cake, but I'm going to try, so maybe you won't listen and just eat cake, which is... So tonight, I kind of want to just give the Board an update as to where we were with our facilities group and the facilities plan and the focus. We did kind of try to get a committee together and had 180 responses of people who were interested. We held four different sessions at different times of the day, different weeks as well to kind of bring some respondents in. Forty-six of the 180, which is 43% of respondents, participated in one of these four brainstorming sessions. In these, these participants were a vast cross-section of parents, community members, and community partners. It wasn't just all parents. If we focused on trying to get a diverse group of participants to really kind of hear what they had to say. In these sessions, we presented the overview of the historical facilities plans, kind of where we've been, some of the recommendations put together by Bielski and MB5, and potentially get their, get their thoughts on where we're going. So the results of the group, first of all, just some, on the status of the existing school facilities and what they thought, when asked, and we used, we recorded these questions through Poll Everywhere software, so it was a, participants brought their cellphones in, and we truly tried to be interactive with them. If they didn't have a cellphone, we gave them a Chromebook so that they can log in and participate as well, so we tried to reduce as many barriers as we could. On the current challenges or experiences with the facilities, we had 56 responses to that, the themes that emerged from that, so I took that and did some qualitative theme to look for some theming in there. Current available space was one of those themes that kind of came up a lot. The new housing developments and the concerns for those that were coming. The need to modernize some of our legacy facilities to be on par with the new buildings. Specifically, air conditioning was met a lot, which is fitting for today. Educational spaces, the technology, also even the, things like the furniture, the new buildings having brand new furniture and some of the legacy buildings having older furniture in there. The lack or need of upgrades to our athletic facilities was a big thing that came through without even really getting into that that much. That kind of came out in a lot of this discussion. And then traffic, traffic issues, both predominantly the traffic issues both here and at Lammuth were the two that came out the most. There, when we asked the question, how can our buildings be more adaptable to meet future and educational logistic needs? We got 49 responses to that, and those themes really came out to the addition of collaborative spaces. We talked a lot about the work being done based on the portrait of Riverside Beaver and kind of how we can collaborate together and teach those competencies. Renovation or replacement of legacy buildings. And then air conditioning throughout again was brought up by these participants. And all, those meetings were held here in an air-conditioned space, but that was one thing that was brought up a lot. The next part we got into is really talking about the idea that schools are just more, need to serve, and we serve more than just the students, and we really want to be that hub of the community as part of that portrait of a graduate. And we talked about that and really looked at, in terms of any type of plan, what other things do you want to see as a part of this plan? The number one thing that came out, and this was really a, so this question got a lot of responses, but the responses were a lot of just, pick the ones that you want. So we had more responses than participants because you could vote for more than one. The one, the number one clear that came out was an upgraded, upgraded and/or additional athletic field, and then also a performing arts center. So those kind of tied with the most responses, some sort of upgraded facilities for our students there. An auditorium was the third one that kind of came through, well, actually, that was the fourth. Community education options. So we talked about adult education, the ways to make our welding lab accessible and available to adult partners and kind of run adult education classes using things like our welding lab, our new CTE space, and kind of the vision that we have for that. Health and wellness and urgent care, the governor's really pushing for those, for schools to kind of have some of those in combination of that, so we listed that, and then other items that weren't listed as above. And those were, there was no rhyme or reason to what they put down for other. They were listing off all sorts of things and that, so to try to kind of, we put it more as in other type of space. Then I went and presented the options represented by the Bielski report, kind of what, when we had them do their studies, bringing back that report and coming up with those options. These are what we said, these were ideas that were presented to the Board through a company in terms of what to do with our facilities after the Phase Two fail at the levy, at the ballot. The number one response was build a new 6'8" middle school, followed by build a new 5'8" middle school. They were really, they ranked, this was a ranking, so all of these are the aggregate of all the participants and the ranking and kind of where they put them. So the first rank was a 6'8" middle school, the second was a new 5'8" middle school. Third ranking was grade shifts at all buildings and then adding significant additions to Lammuth and Buckeye. These concepts were kind of explained and explored along with footprints of the buildings themselves to see that we do have the land. Build a new elementary school in addition to Lammuth was fourth, and then the last one was renovate, renovated additions to all of our, all of our legacy buildings. So really looking at a new larger space where all of, all of our students will get the benefit of some sort of new initiative in that aspect. And then the last thing we kind of mentioned as we went through all these is I asked the, I said, what else is out there that we haven't mentioned that perhaps you could, you could provide? This was a, it was an open-ended response where participants could type in a response and actually vote them up if they agreed with that, so there's like a thumbs up or a thumbs down option. The number one item that came out was build a new 9'12" high school to improve the auditorium, community center, and fieldhouse. So this is really the brainstorming, and in brainstorming, there's no bad answers or no wrong answers. The other, the other theme that came out is convert the current high school to a middle school. Utilize the campus property for new building and community fieldhouse. Change grade bands at current building for the ones, those themes really kind of came through a lot through all those presentations. So kind, the next steps moving forward, we are taking these and putting together some really, narrowing all these down into three major plans, bringing these communities back to have some of these. I shared that executive summary, we shared that executive summary with our, with our stakeholders, bringing them back into this to kind of then put some real dollars prices and even kind of what, what the cost would be to kind of take those next steps, what we're really looking at along the way and making those connections as well. And so at that, I will leave it to questions that came out from those meetings, that was one of the parts that I wanted to discuss.
What do you think the timeline looks like to bring something back to the Board?
I think we're looking probably December, by the time we get through and get some things. Now, we can make it a little bit quicker, but it is getting scheduled and getting that feedback and trying to find that sweet spot between people who said they want to be participating in meeting their schedules and getting them involved. And I think for this next round, we'll do some in-person and we'll do a couple virtual options as well where we present them and get their feedback from where they are over Zoom, potentially even over lunch. There's some districts who have really had some success with like a, like a watch-and-learn type thing where it's over Zoom, so I think we'll give that a shot to see what that participation looks like as well for some of that signup.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful to host some of these meetings in our, you know, legacy buildings, whether it's Buckeye or, you know, at Riverside. A lot of people come to Riverside for a variety of things, but they might not be at Buckeye or Melrose.
I would, I would agree. I also think it's also beneficial to host them in the new buildings.
Yes, I agree.
Kind of split them around so that they can see, and even potentially offer, you know, open houses at some of these buildings, that community open houses, so you can come and see, and we can answer questions and that sort, to get some of those, you know, just to, just to see and experience the different facilities that are there and kind of their states.
Does, do we have anybody, at one point, there was kind of some conversation that possibly there was people that might be interested in helping us think about ways to finance or how to...
So that came up a lot. We started to have some of those conversations because we don't want the entire burden to be on the taxpayer. We know that that's, that's not something that was there. So we, we talked a lot about creative financing ways. We mentioned, we use the fieldhouse, the community fieldhouse as the model, and raising the funds for that. Now, construction costs are a whole lot different now than they were back then, so we know that that's a, that's, that's something that's up. But we've, we've looked at community partners, potentially looking at community partners for some of these additional things that have become the hub of the community, whether it's reaching out to the township or some of the other, you know, municipalities to look at senior center options and what that looks like, could look like potentially. The option of an auditorium, I know that Mr. Alessa and I had conversations that are deep into, we don't want to be pool managers, we don't want to hire lifeguards, we don't want any of that. You know, we have, we certainly have the space to have a community auditorium and walking track similar like South, where we South has with their high school, but in the, in the eyes of running that facility and all that, that's not something that we want to do. We'd be more than happy to partner with, with an agency like, you know, like either the Y or even a, even a health agency like Manner did with the Lake Health, what was it at that point, the Lake Health Complex in Houshou, UH. More than happy to partner with them and work out an agreement where they can run it and we can use it. Those are, those are kind of ideal situations along that, so I think that's a big thing that really kind of came out in some of this. Tennis courts came out as well, the fact that we lack, we don't have tennis courts. In fact, we only offer, currently only have girls tennis because of, I think, court availability and cost. It's a very expensive sport. We rent the courts, so that was another one that came up. And then the idea of a combined tennis and pickleball, those, because pickleball's big. So some of those, those are really good partnerships that we can look with and work with grants and all that to really make this the hub of the, of the community. I think that's one thing, we got in a lot of rich conversation about part of the, bringing one of the idea of uniting all or bringing together all of these, we need to do a central hub, and this is kind of one of the central locations. So we have the land, we have the space, how do we do that? We also talked about the needs that aren't, you know, that, I guess sexy, for lack of a better term, transportation, maintenance, we need to, you know, coming in here, and until you experience driving in here at 7:30 in the morning, trying to drop a kid off and making through the wave of parking, and we do a great job with it, but you have the bus, the bus wash, the buses, the buses that are there and all that, kind of trying to move that facility offsite and building that somewhere else is something that needs to be considered with any of these plans. The other one we talked about a lot in depth is the community, the fact that there is a big need for the community for another common space, some of what that looks like, potentially another turf field of some sort, whether it could be a multi-use field or something like that. That was one that came out a lot by, a lot of our, a lot of the participants in these groups have students who are involved in youth sports or find use for that field, whether it's, whether it's a lacrosse use in the, in the spring, fall sports as well, baseball, you know, that kind of multi-use. And if we're going to do some things to really kind of consider the entirety of it and what we do with it. I mean, because our football, our current turf field is used almost every single day for, by not only our students, but also by our residents. It's something we're really proud of. Once we get the track done, we really, really proud of it. But it's, we're, you know, it is about kind of continuing that and what that looks like. And even the, the current community fieldhouse with the walkers, and how can we expand that and expand those options that aren't necessarily good.
So for the next round, I know that only 46 of the 180, you know, came, but I would still like to reach out to those 62 other people.
We have, we sent them all the, we sent them all the summary to let them know kind of what they had. We also asked for any other feedback that they have or any questions to try to continue to engage in. We want to engage as many people as we can as a part of this work, which is why we went with the larger focus groups instead of the smaller, to really kind of get and do a lot of listening. There was a lot that kind of came out with Phase One, and the notice that, you know, the two legacy buildings kind of were left behind in some of this and didn't necessarily, there's, there's still some, I would say some hurt feelings in that as to where they are. I think one of the things we're really happy about, some work we've done, is we've done some work in those legacy buildings now to kind of get them up to, up to date and as we continue to move on. Even our solution to bring fifth graders up to Lammuth, really excited about that one because that doesn't affect those students directly, but what the next steps are kind of moving forward and how we can really kind of make some of these spaces so that they're all equitable learning across, across the, across the district because they do look different.
Do you think you got a good representation of the district?
I think we did. We really did do a nice job of reaching out for more than just parents. We wanted, and not just parents, but always the involved parents. I really, I think we even actively looked for people who were against, kind of seen as not really some of the opposition, what they would want from it, you know, and to just to listen and kind of hear, and so they could hear where we are. And it was more of an informational, this is, this is the truth, this is kind of the stacks as to where we are, these are the reports and the information we are given, and this is kind of what we're doing to move forward and where we are with kind of those sources. So there were, we had a very good, I thought it was a really good pocket, a good split of people who kind of came, and they weren't, they weren't all, all of our typicals. We had some of those, we had a lot of people, if they signed up, we invited them, got them to sign up and come in, and they did come in. And I think even into some of the next meetings might be even going to other places as well. So kind of bringing the show on the road and doing some different things.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right, well, that, that concludes my, my report for, for this week. It's July 28th, keep it short.
All right, that brings us to old business. I don't think I received anything via email. Is there any old business at the table?
I just asked about the bathroom partitions and how that was coming along. Do you want to share that?
That's in my update.
Oh, it's in your update, so we're good.
All right, that brings us to new business. Wasn't an email about this, so as of today, with Mr. Keeney joining the Board, we just wanted to make sure that we made a formal announcement about the committees. So Mr. Keeney, Ms. Harden was on the Finance Audit and Personnel Committee, she was the chair, so we'd ask you to step into that position, and then she was a member of Curriculum with Denise Booster, so ask you to step into that position, and then she was the Booster Organization Liaison, so that's just some regular meetings keeping up to date with what our Booster Clubs are doing.
Okay.
All right, and any questions, let us know, but we'll work out schedules, we'll work out schedules with you on meetings and everything.
Okay.
As of right now, we have a meeting for Curriculum pencil-in next week on August 13th at 7:30 a.m. and Finance right after that, 8:00 a.m. Yes, question, does that still work for Mr. Keeney's schedule or are you...
Right, so August 13th, 7:30, and then 8:30.
7:30 and 8:00, we have a short...
Oh, eight, the short meetings.
But, I mean, they're right after each other, so...
Okay.
Any other new business? I don't think I received anything via email. All right, so that will bring us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First one is Superintendent Business Advisory Liaison, myself. We have not had a meeting, we'll pick that back up when the school year begins.
Yes, that's correct. We are rolling out District Y of the Port of Riverside Beaver, which came on a committee. So we are excited about that for this year.
That brings us to Curriculum and Programming Committee and the Facilities Liaison.
Okay, as far as the Facilities Liaison, I'm part of that committee, but Dr. Rotino gave us a report, so we pretty much covered that part. As far as Curriculum and Programming Committee, we discussed several items. One of them had to do with SAT and ACT testing. The SAT is being revamped and it's going to be in a digital format with a shorter test. The ACT takes up to three days to administer if extended time is needed for a student. This ACT is given in February to juniors, and this test is aligned with college boards and AP classes. Dr. Malakar will keep us informed regarding any changes in testing administration.
It's the SAT we're switching to. The SAT we are switching to.
We are definitely switching to.
From the ACT to the SAT.
Okay.
And may I go to the question we'll go up to the audience?
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you. But that's why I said you'd keep us updated, okay. And then professional development, the staff is continuing their training in the science of reading, which is required by the state, and that includes all staff in, in some capacity. Many of our staff members had already done some coursework toward that, especially at the elementary level, and they are continuing to complete their training on their own. It's, you know, on the computer, and they have made significant progress at this time. And then for the start of school, the staff will have three days of training, two in the district, in district, meaning held by the district, and one day in their respective buildings. And the certified staff will be training in personalized learning and the tier system, which includes intervention as well as behavior strategies. The system which, oh, excuse me, classified staff will meet in the morning and participate in disability awareness training. And then the administrative team is also participating in a retreat on leadership training involving one message, customer service, and positive high energy. There will also be AI training, which will lead to AI certification, and it has the goal of teacher leaders trained in AI, and there will be a presentation on data-driven instruction and common assessments. Okay. And then ELA, which is English Language Arts. There is a curriculum adoption that involves in K2 the wit and wisdom implementation for this fall, and staff will have a full day of training on that. In grades three through five, there will be pilot classrooms for the final two selections during the first semester because there's many choices, and so they're looking at those. Have they finalized their two selections yet or not yet?
I believe so. I would have to check with Mrs. Malakar.
Okay, all right. A decision will be made in January for implementation in the fall of 2025. And then grades six through eight discussions will take place in the spring of 2025. And then the OST, which is Ohio State Test Data, that's going to be released this early fall, and Dr. Rotino will be giving a presentation on the results and plans being used this year to help improve student achievement. So that's all I have for curriculum unless you want to add anything.
All right. That brings us to Buildings and Grounds and Operations Committee and Alumni Association Liaison. Mr. Fishel?
The Alumni Association has an upcoming Hall of Fame induction ceremony and dinner. More details in the next meeting. We will have an Alumni Association meeting. And then Buildings and Grounds, we didn't meet, but we're going to be meeting next week. We're going to be interviewing construction managers at risk, and that will be a full morning meeting, basically 7:30 until 12 o'clock, 12 o'clock as scheduled by Mr. Placko.
We have four firms coming in.
And that's the update.
Great, thank you. Policy Committee and Legislative Liaison.
Yeah, we haven't had anything in policy. Legislative, there are some things going on, but their legislators are on break for the summer session and probably won't be back until after the election is over. So there won't be as many things going on right now, so I'm going to spread out some of the things that I report on. For the week of June 24th, I'm going back to our last meeting. The House passed Senate Bill 117. There were some changes made to that, but that bill provided $4.6 million to the State Board of Education Licensor Fund. That fund is underfunded as far as I continue to read, so I don't know what that means for teacher licensures, just will...
So there won't be as many things going on right now, so I'm going to spread out some of the things that I report on. For the week of June twenty-fourth, I'm going back to our last meeting. The House passed Senate Bill one seventeen. There were some changes made to that, but that bill provided four point six million dollars to the State Board of Education Licensor Fund. That fund is underfunded as far as I continue to read, so I don't know what that means for teacher licensures. Just will keep you apprised of that. The Senate agreed to changes in Senate Bill one sixty-eight, which, one of the things among a lot of things that were in on that bill was it increased the competitive bidding threshold to seventy-five thousand dollars for school districts and subsequently increases the amount annually by three percent. And that hasn't been something that has been adjusted for inflation ever. So that's new for that, it went from fifty to seventy-five thousand, so there's that. The bill's effective date is not until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. That's when the three percent goes in and increases the cap on net indebtedness. A school district may exceed for non-required locally funded initiatives from fifty percent of the local share of the basic project cost to seventy-five percent of that cost. And that's something that's important when we're talking about debt financing for any facility plans that we do. So that's something to keep in mind. The House Higher Education Committee heard information on House Bill five seven two would require the Chancellor of Higher Education to conduct an audit of educated prep programs to determine what instruction they are providing to students on mental and behavioral health, behavior management and classroom management, and to make recommendations. And the committee passed that bill after adopting changes that would require the survey of undergraduate teaching programs to focus on the current instruction provided by the program, which would include processes for establishing a positive school and classroom climate, knowledge of the reasons for disruptive behaviors, and how teachers and administrators' actions impact the classroom and school district, evidence-based techniques for preventing, managing, and responding to mild, moderate, and more disruptive student behaviors, processes for fostering and maintaining positive teacher and student relationships, and techniques provided to teachers and administrators to manage their own stress and foster their own well-being. So that's something that's coming down actually from the state level. So regardless of people's opinions on those kinds of things, one way or the other, that is coming down from the state level at this point, so more on that to come. Sure, there was anything in here? No, this was just about lame duck and that this is a good time right now while people are on break to make contact with legislators if we have anything that we would like to advocate for on behalf or for school district behalf. And then the fiscal year appeals window for state testing opened July eighteenth. And so districts now have time to review their data that has been issued preliminarily, that is not published yet, and, you know, take exception to some things if there is data that has been incorrectly reported or whatever. So our school district will be doing that. And I just thought this was sort of fun. The Ohio School Bus Drivers compete at an international safety competition. Four school bus drivers from the state of Ohio who provide service in Groveport, Madison Local Schools, Olentangi Local Schools, Solon City Schools, and Lakota Local Schools competed against top drivers from throughout the United States and Canada. So it's levels like the Bus Driver Olympics, it's sort of interesting. So I just thought that was something fun to pass along. And that's all I have for now, I have another batch of, you know, articles and information to read up on from, from later in July, but I didn't get to those yet, so more to come, yeah. So that's all I have.
That brings us to our Superintendent's Report.
All right. So a couple of things, first of all, I want to publicly thank all of those who are working throughout the summer, especially now to update and get our schools ready. Mr. Alessic will be speaking at our next meeting and express a report. And I know he's super excited about it to thank all of his staff. But one of the, I am excited to hear that as well. One of the things that I kind of want to highlight tonight a little bit is that came out of our district leadership team and some of our committee work when we did that, we put them into some committees. And one of the initiatives that came out of it was from that, our Climate and Culture Committee to utilize our teaching staff and some of our workers who only work, who were here throughout the school year but then have the summers off, to utilize them for as summer help if they want to take part in it. They've done that at all of our schools and the work that they've done have been amazing. And actually, really been a godsend for Mr. Alessic is we have more construction projects going on than we can admit. So he's busy with that, so this staff is really doing a lot of great work throughout and noticing some of the things that just haven't been taken care of. So they're painting classrooms, they're moving mulch. If you drive by Buckeye, you'll notice the new front entrance, but take a look at the mulch that's there and the landscaping as well. It's, it looks gorgeous. It looked better before the deer got to them, but it really does look really nice. So at least we got some well-fed deer in the Buckeye area as well. But they've done, they've done a lot of things, including painting classrooms, the modular units as well as the lounge to kind of take care of their own. We have nutrition staff working at River View to assist in cleaning furniture, making, getting that building, which is still busy throughout with our last camp, getting that building ready for the opening. And that turnaround goes a lot quicker from them. At Parkside, they've kind of helped with the office, handrails, bathrooms there. At Lamu, they, we've done a lot of work at Lamu this summer, but they painted four classrooms. They helped with some of the offices where we shifted, they prepared and got ready for the fifth grade to arrive. So they've done a lot of work with that, as long as cleaning carpets, scrubbing lockers, putting furniture together. You go to the building to see the teachers kind of putting the, it's kind of neat, you hope they, it's not like IKEA and all the parts are there. They're all used, but they, they do a really great job with the working, really thankful for everything that they've done. And then as well as just the campus here, painting some of it, we're doing the restroom project. One of the things that's not mentioned is we're painting the restrooms as well. So the demo work has been done, all of the stalls are out, so the restrooms are closed right now. But they've gone in and they painted them as well and kind of scrubbed them and sanitized them. And really, not just replaced the stalls, so it wasn't a one minute and a place. But there's a lot of work that's done behind the scenes and then the stalls will go up next week and the week after. Kind of ready for school to start. So we'll have the new, the restrooms on the first floor and John R. are kind of ready to go at that point. So we're really a huge help for all of them to kind of get it ready. The other thing to really point out is we did some work at Melrich and Buckeye at the modular units to put carpet in the new classrooms, carpet in the new, in the existing modules that are there. I walked in, did a walk-through the other day just to look at it and those, I mean, it's, it's amazing how they look. Like there's new tile on some of the floors, kind of taking care, just some little things to those classrooms that really make a difference and make it kind of really seem fresh. And even when the teachers, you know, the summer teachers who were helping in there, they, they said, we're getting carpet here, let's paint this too while we have it, while we have it turned apart in the outlet, let's go ahead and paint it. So they did some of that work as well. The other thing to take note is in some of our bigger spaces like at Lamu and in the lecture hall, Mr. Alessic's staff is replacing the ceiling grid as well as painting the grid and then replacing the ceiling tiles. So it looks really fresh and new. So when we go back to having board meetings in our lecture room, you'll, you'll notice that kind of that that's there. It really does have a refreshed look to it and feel as well. So we've done some work along that, along that well. Just want to give some construction updates as to where we were and show some of the vessel, vessel work. The high school vessel, all the vessel work is scheduled to be done by the end of next Friday. So, you know, it's in different stages of completion right now. The high school vessel has taken shape, it's on the roof, the flooring is polished, it looks great. The glass is in, they're finishing up some electric stuff and then they're actually going to put in. We made some changes to the original plan. The original plan had two ramps coming off the side, we went with just one kind of, one ramp and then a step all the way around the front. So it's going to look really nice and kind of give a real solid front entrance to, to the campus there. That work is done and they're just kind of patching up some stuff. On the inside by the board office, it is welcoming, welcome into this plywood wall. But it's welcoming and we're hoping the plywood wall comes on. So we're replacing the old doors that were there with this new fresh storefront look is really a great look. And we'll be able to truly identify it as the Board of Education offices. Where it used to have a small plaque of sign over it, we'll be able to really kind of put some signage up there to really identify it and make it truly look fitting with the work that's done in that, in that space. The track replacement is, the asphalt is down for the track. We kind of had an opportunity to dig up some of the field as well and fix a water leak that was in the field. So while we replace the track, we will fix the water leak so we can get water back to the practice field. And so to make it easier for our teams to kind of stay hydrated, especially in the heat. We are ready for meet the team tonight, we have some, one of the agenda items is to order padding for the, for the asphalt and the new track eventually to protect it when it's not being used for, for running. But that, that asphalt is set. After the first game there, after, after the tailgate game, the opening night, the team is, the football team is away for two weeks and we are moving some of the events off of that to kind of spray the tracks and get the track down. And then all we have to do is stripe it, will be the last, last part of it. There are only three fronts, I think the stripe of the track, stripe tracks in the nation. So we're, we're on their schedule to get them and it'll be ready to go. Excited to have that project complete and finished as well.
Yeah, I thought I would just add that once they lay on the asphalt, they have to let it cure for thirty days in front of the track surface on, which is always a tough thing to negotiate within a summer period. So that's why it kind of works out, the first home meeting, then they'll put the track surfaces down during that two week period.
One thing that I've been really checking daily as we get through is our varsity field. We spent, we had a company come in and re-circus our fields, my varsity baseball field and my varsity softball field. And after every heavy rain, when there's standing water in the parking lot, there's nothing on the field. Those fields are phenomenal, they're, they're kind of taken now, so we're keeping, we're keeping the teams off them now. But we are really excited about opening up the spring sports on the, the spring sports season on those new fields. They are, they're great, they're really done correctly and we're excited to kind of see what can happen from that. So it's been a, you know, it was, it was a good investment to kind of get that there and I think we're going to get some good use out of those fields. I think Mr. Alessic has picture directions on how to, how to keep them so that we keep them up and playable throughout the season. It's not going to eliminate all rainouts, I mean, they're, they're going to hold water, we're going to have some of that there. But it's going to really allow, allow our athletes to have more home games than they have in the past, so.
Did they fix the mound, the future mound?
They did, they did, the mound is fixed, they've done a lot of work throughout all of that to kind of get that fixed. So it is all up to standard, they squared it up and squared the foul, like the foul lines have shifted over time, so they squared some of that too. There's a lot more work than even, I was kind of amazed at what they've done, but it's, they, they look beautiful and they're really nice. Lamu, they're working on Lamu, the Lamu storefront, the office of Lamu, because of the new vestibule in there is, is amazing. The change there alone with the natural light that has come in now with the, it's, it's really impressive to kind of see that work going through. They are on their ways to finishing the work on the, on the vestibules at Lamu, the vestibule project. This is the front vestibule that's going there. There, you can see the, the door into the office, once you come into the vestibule and then that gets you into the, the school that way as well. That, that project is, is really going well, I'm excited about that. The back side wall, this is a little bit older picture, I think it's, three days ago, they, they replaced some of that plywood with glass and we are told by next Friday it will all be glass. So as that comes in, they're continuing it. But this is a really nice thing, as well as it will also have a handicap, we have ADA disability button on the doors as well to allow access for our athletes going there. Dr. Bass is salivating about putting some signage up there and everything else and, and kind of making it welcoming. So we're looking into what that, what that looks like in that project as well. But it's really a, a change to, to the look of the back of that building and removal of the plexiglass that was once there for, for a solid structure that's there. One thing that is not, I don't have a picture of, is the gym floor. We did have some setbacks with that floor, given the age. We did get a quote just recently to put plywood down so we could set the floor. We backed a little bit, that's a little over sixteen thousand, it'll be on the fifteenth agenda for approval. But we're going to go ahead and move forward as an emergency, make sure we get kids in, specs and kit with that. But that's with putting down a plywood layer and then putting the same floor over the top of it that we can get first. So that is one thing that came in, too late to kind of add to the agenda at this time without proper discussion. But it is something that's very good to continue that process moving forward.
What, what had to be done to the walls there?
They painted the walls.
That's it?
Yeah, they painted, well, they did a little bit of tuck pointing in the, in the structure, which was a critical identification on the biostudy report, so we did look at that. We basically did some tuck pointing in that gym and then we went through and painted the walls and the ceiling. And it, it is super bright in there, it looks really nice, it's going to be a great, so once that floor is in, it's going to be amazing. Looks really with the new entrance, it's going to be a whole new, whole new atmosphere to entering that school. It's, it's going to be great for our kids. Don't think the floor is going to be ready for opening day, so it will be a little bit delayed. The floor insulation will be a setback. The tile was so old it started to pop as they, they scrubbed it, took the wax off it. So, you know, we had to kind of put something to help with that. The other things that are there, we're really excited to look at, these are the asphalt. They're eventually going to be striped before school starts. They are, the four square courts is on the right and the basketball court is on the left. We are moving the gaga ball pit behind, we're going to have that moved a little bit away from that basketball. The hoops are coming in in the next couple of weeks and the striping is coming as well. We are also going to have some benches around these courts that are going to be donated by the Lumen Family Foundation. And one of them is going to say Kobe's Court, all right, for the basketball court in, in memory of Kobe. Because he would have been a fifth grader at Lamu this year. So we're really excited to kind of, we met with them to kind of take some steps moving forward. But they are looking into benches and kind of putting benches around it, impacting the space for our students who are new to Lamu, but then also our sixth and seventh graders are going to recess and they're excited about it as well. And Buckeye, Buckeye looks, like I said, Buckeye looks like a brand new school. It's a, it's even more along today with the carpeting that's in the office, the offices are shifted around. You walk into Buckeye and it's, it's really neat. You're walking into the vestibule and then right in the office and you actually have a space off to the left that can be used as a swing space for all different types of, of use, student use as well. So we're going to give Buckeye teachers another space utilized. As well as in the picture on the right, you can see where the transaction window is going to be in the, in the vestibule. And that is, that drawer is in now and their, that office is carpeted. We did put a drop ceiling in Buckeye, it looks really, it doesn't look like the same office. It's modern, it's, it's well done. Melrich, the Melrich vestibule has been done. One of the things we did is take a look at the pathway in front, replacing all of that with just a solid cement pad that goes all the way so that ADA button can be truly utilized as intended as well as just kind of making it look clean as well. So front of Melrich looks a little bit different. That's all of the construction work going on, but I think that's enough for one summer, we've been pretty busy. One other thing really happy to share is we had our third annual Riverside Job Fair right here on the twelfth. This is a look kind of organized that with her team. We had thirty applicants attend this year's event. From that, we've had three full-time hires, seven part-time hires on today's agenda and we're still kind of working to get through some and kind of fill some places. We've also had ten non-teaching substitutes, we've made offers to them and those are the really hard ones to find. And then we had twenty teaching substitutes sign up, get their training here, really smooth event. Really just in the morning, they, they came in, interviews were given on the spot, had, made some, you know, had some conversations. Some people were brought back, some of our teaching candidates were brought back for a second round, the Great Screen Round Forum. So we are pretty well-staffed as to where we need to be. We have a couple openings here and there that are coming a little bit later as we, our enrollment fluctuates and things like that. But we're in a pretty good spot with that. And upcoming events, one of the great ones that we do every year, the Gridiron Club's Annual Community Tailgate is the twenty-third. That's the home football opening, that's four to seven. And that will be behind the high school out, out here, really excited about that. That'll be the opening of, of the season. We don't have a solid date on meet the team tonight yet because we're working to work with schedules as well as the track. So as soon as they get that, we'll get that out on our social media and broadcast it to as many places as we can. And finally, it's our push for anyone who's class of twenty thirty-seven, if you haven't signed up for kindergarten yet, please do so. We've got a big class already, I think we're around two hundred and seventy students who are registered and getting more every day, the sooner we can get them, the easier it is for us to plan, get them into classes and make sure we are, we are appropriately staffed. So that's my last one and that.
What is the normal number per year?
It fluctuates, we are, we've been down, last year was high at two ninety. I would say we're expecting around two fifteen, but we are trending a little bit higher than that for these last two classes. Obviously, the, there's a dip with the COVID class who's kind of held their way back. And then the current, is it second grade or third grade? Which is a, is, is the, there's a, no, the current third grade, we use the anomaly, it's a little larger, so.
They're about three forty-three.
Yeah, so that, that's a, that's a bump because of the.
Sorry.
Thank you. But we are, yeah, we're looking, I would say we expect them to be between two hundred and fifty to three hundred when we will leave.
But we always pick up some kids in first grade.
We, not as many as we used to with having all-day kindergarten. So when we didn't have all-day kindergarten, we would have family send their students and lots for all-day kindergarten. But now that we offer all-day kindergarten, we don't see that, that's big of a bump.
When's kindergarten orientation? Anybody? Is that before the tailgate? Is that before the tailgate? No, I don't think so.
It is?
No, I think it's.
I thought it was the next week. Just sent them the handout.
I want to say the 26th. No, that's the first day.
My first, my second, my third?
Yeah, my second, my third.
It is the same week?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, it's always nice to invite them to come to the tailgate and.
Yeah, it's the 21st. It's on the calendar.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Retino, anything else?
That's all.
Great, thank you. All right, that brings us to our Treasurers Report and Committee Update. So first is Finance Audit Personnel Committee. Ms. Brewster will give that report.
All right, we met on July 18th, and under personnel updates, Mrs. Alef shared that they had a successful job fair, and as Dr. Retino just reviewed, a lot of new hires and people that we have, you know, at least touched base with and have a pool of people to pull from. That, that's been a good thing. There will be a new teacher orientation as part of the onboarding process. There are vacant supplemental positions that are in process, and we have several we're voting on tonight. On August 19th, opening day, there will be a benefits fair for healthcare featuring local businesses. And I wanted to thank the efforts of your department because it's just an amazing thing, probably next to what we do with our facilities over the summer. It's a lot to staff, and there's been a lot of changes, shifting and so on and so forth, but great job. Under school safety, the one resource officer resigned and Mr. Bruning is going to Buckeye. The sheriff was conducting interviews, so do we have any updates on that or not yet?
We're waiting on background check.
Okay, so we're waiting on a contract. All right, for this board meeting, the finance report with the annual investment report will be given by Mr. Platko, which he'll share later. The investments made have been very lucrative for our district, and I want to thank Mr. Platko and your team for your expertise because you've done a great job. He will also share information about the athletics annual transfer, which is a cash flow mechanism. Also, high-quality instructional materials were ordered for reading in the amount of 180,000. That's part of that Witten Wisdom K2 program, reading program. Our treasurer also reported to us that day about the Concord Residential Improvement District, which is otherwise known as RID, R-I-D, and that was approved by the Concord Trustees. Mr. Platko had written a letter opposing this proposal. In September, there was another RID proposed by Concord Township, and I understand there's going to be a total of four, from what I'm hearing. Essentially, our schools are losing significant tax dollars under these proposals. Our next meeting will be at 7:30 on August 13th.
That brings us to an update from the treasurer.
All right, looking at our, our monthly financial reports for June 2024, that report will be available on board docs and on treasurer page on our website. June is also the last month of our annual fiscal year, and we ended the fiscal year with cash balance for all funds of just over $40 million. Of that, the general fund is just over $23 million at the year end. Suspicious of a little bit, the permanent improvement fund, we actually have $9 million in the fund right now, just to highlight, 3.1 million of that is encumbered. That means it's already under contract for different construction projects that we're doing this summer, school buses, technology, other things like that. Our improvement fund, and so right now our unencumbered balance as of June 30th is just shy of $5.9 million that's available for use. For general fund, our revenue for June was just over $3 million. That includes about $550,000 in unrestricted state foundation payments. That's our monthly state funding from the state of Ohio. We also received just over 1.9 million at Homestead and Rollback Universal from the state of Ohio, so that's part of your property tax bill that the state pays on your behalf. Typically, we get those in May, this fiscal year we can receive it early June. Interest revenue for June was $113,000. In Star Ohio, we're currently earning 5.45% and our retro investment account is 4.08% for four-year, about 4.88%. And our expenditures for June for the general fund was just shy of 4.7 million. Looking at our fiscal year end results, this is, this is showing how we compare to our May five-year forecast of Department of State Department of Education, to prepare our forecast twice a year, and this one was following the May, we still prepare it in late April and early May. Looking at the first two lines, general property tax, public utility, personal property tax, we received 31 million in property taxes. No variance, that number was known because of the timing of the late state, those payments come in, and public utility tax was just over 3 million. Our unrestricted grants and aid, that's mostly our state funding from the state of Ohio, and also about 200,000 or so of casino revenue received. That came in within $32,000 of our estimate, or 0.43%. Restricted grants and aids came in about 12,000 higher than expected, that's about 1.9% variance. State share of local property taxes, that's your Homestead and Rollback reimbursements, came in right about on target there, just a variance of $115 on 1.8. Other operating revenues came in about 155,000 higher than expected, which is about 2.4% higher, mostly due to interest income. And a lot of times at the end of fiscal year, we see a lot of fee payments where it's usually caused by parenting, about paying fees, that's the, 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 the relation. And then lastly, all other financing resources, this includes return of advances, but most of this number is made up of what's called threshold cost reimbursement. This is formally called catastrophic cost reimbursement. This is a payment we received from the state of Ohio based on expenditure for special education students that exceed certain thresholds and a disability. Came in $45,000 less than expected or 10.51%. However, the state informed us in early July that they recalculated the payments and they paid us additional funds in July of 51,000. So we would have received, if we would have received that in June, we would have been mentioned right on target, but in July, I think.
That's for the prior year, correct?
It's for the prior, yeah, so it's by year. So overall, our, our revenue came in like 53.6, 53.26 million, so 154,000 higher than we forecasted, or 10.49%. On the expenditure side, this was a little bit smaller here, but on personnel services, that's our, you know, salaries line, came in about 316,000 higher than expected, came in 30,000, 64,000, that's about 1% higher than forecasted. Employee retirement benefits, insurance benefits came in just over 13 million, a variance of $646, which is less than 1.51%. That was kind of a fluke, I think, for really good forecasting. Purchased services came in about 217,000, 3% higher. That's a lot of times dependent on the timing of, of what we paid in bonuses for those. Supplies and materials came in about 27,000 lower than expected, so about 2.65% difference. And the capital outlays, a fairly small figure, 59,000, came in closer to the estimated. Other objects came in right about where we expected to, came in 5,000, 600 dollars over, and that ones a less than 1%. Then we had some transfers out, additional reimbursement forecast that just covers some negative cash balances and some various little funds. And then lastly, advances out, we didn't project any advances out. Typically, at the end of fiscal year, we'll advance to some of our federal grant funds if there's a negative balance. Typically, try to avoid those, but we have that school violence prevention and safety grant, which is the most Sarah communication vice of that number May. So we had a transfer, we had advanced 224,000 of that fund just to cover the year-end negative balance and come right back to the general fund in July. So while it's, you know, it shows that our expenditures came in 743,000 higher than anticipated, we backed up to 224,000, but really off about 1%. So our cash balance at the end of fiscal year was about 589,000 lower than anticipated, but that, you know, that transfer, that advance was about half of that amount. And then lastly, our incumbents came in about 182,000 lower. These are outstanding purchasers at the end of fiscal year. And the reason it came out lower is we expected to issue a purchaser for the Wisdom Materials before June 30th, we had a issue in July, just because we were on back and forth with the vendor finalizing a quote. So things came in pretty close to where we projected. Just a little bit of update on the career tech addition. The RFQ for the design services, tonight's agenda, we have the proposal for TDA to do design services for career tech additions. That's on the, on the grounds tonight. And the RFQ for construction and enterprise, because it's the most official mission, we're doing some grounds meeting on August 2nd, or, excuse me, August 6th, we're interviewing firms. The pricing proposal is tomorrow by 4:00 PM, so whatever those have been, everything's on the 6th. We're hoping to, we're, we're on August 15th, person number 26, to finalize the contract. They already have a draft contract in their hands, so it shouldn't be too, too hard a process, but if they're out of contract, really, it's not that big of a deal because they're more estimating what's been designed and obviously we're just getting started designing structures. That's a resound on that. Couple of quick updates. The OSBA Capital Conference is this November 10th through 12th, Sunday through Tuesday. At the next further meeting on August 15th, we'll need to approve a delegate, a call for business initiatives to be held on that Monday at 2:30 PM. So we want to let you know over the next two weeks, anybody who wanted to attend that conference, so we can get you registered and then we can select that delegate. Now lastly, the Outer State came out of a bulletin, 2024-05, which is a new required fraud reporting, training that's required of all public employees. It's like an eight-minute, seven or eight-minute video you have to watch on the Outer State's website, get a certificate, add a certificate, boy, you have to do it. We have around 600 employees, so that's a big undertaking. And that training has to be repeated every four years, has to be completed by November 29th, not November 30th, but November 29th for some reason. And we have to track all that. And that training does include board members as well, so we're going to use our public schoolwork as training system, but we'll also teach you guys stuff, so you guys get a link to that as well. That way you can track everything in one place, so we monitor that, make sure that we get training for all our employees to apply the deadline, be able to monitor every four years. So it's, have a big undertaking for that. And every public school has to do that, not just schools, but the township should count.
On the CTE addition, for the benefit of people in the audience, can you just tell us in general the timeline and what?
So it's, it's being funded by, we have a 2.5 million dollar grant, career tech grant from the state of Ohio. And so the timeline on the grant is we have to have, we have to do, we need to do the design and bid it out, have it under contract by June 30th of next year. And then we can start, you know, and then we have till 2027 to liquidate the funds, spend on the funds. So we're going to, that's about 2.5 million dollar budget, 4,500 square foot additions we're looking at. In the back courtyard, where like the picnic tables are at by the building lab, is where we're looking at potentially building this. And we're also looking at, when we get the architect on board, whether our owner's rep looking at, what else can we add to that project? What makes sense in the surrounding areas around that addition? So more to come on that as we, as we work through that and see what, what makes sense and doesn't make sense. We estimated 2.5 additional, 2.5 million additional, but that obviously is a discussion we need to have as we're closer, if it's going to be more or less than that and what that might look like. And also keeping in mind with facilities planning and finalizing that and how do they connect to each other.
All right. And then can I ask one question? Could we maybe at our August 15th, right, August 15th meeting, can we get an update on the PI fund? I know you have listed here that we have approximately $9 million in there, and some of that is an anomaly because it was the ARPA funds that came in, that we had done some transferring. And if you can maybe reiterate that whole story and how much we collect in that fund and how much we might be expecting to collect with new property taxes, values and whatnot, so that we can have some greater information for the public as we go forward, because we don't collect quite that much money on an annual basis, so.
And when we receive those funds?
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, you finished?
That's all.
All right, thank you.
If I may, just as in general, tomorrow at Parkside, we sent out a message to our families, just as a reminder, there will be training from the sheriff department tomorrow, so we ask families to not utilize the facilities. It's supposed to be rainy, so I think we're okay with that, but, but long story short, they, they do their, their active shooter training in the buildings. So it's a great facility to do that, and so just as a reminder.
Someone mentioned it on Next Door, and I read it this morning, so I thought, oh, okay.
No, it's all there.
Yeah. Okay.
So nothing's going on, it's literally.
It's just a.
Just.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, that brings us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to speak from the podium. Identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone have public participation? Yes, sir?
I'm Chris Weiss from Leroy. Seventy-two years ago, my father walked out of the high school with this in his hand, his high school diploma. What's interesting for us to tell you about is it bears the original ink signatures of four people. John R. Williams, who was the county superintendent, Henry LeMuth, who was his principal, Clyde Seehannon, who was the president of the school board, and Evelyn Hazen, of the Hazen family. So three, three of these individuals have school district buildings named after them or did have them. I was here last summer when Dr. Kalis retired, as many of you were, and as I drive into the school and I see the, the naming of the driveway, you know, it reminds me of Dr. Kalis, but somehow it seems to fall short. Dr. Kalis gave this district the bulk of his professional career, nearly three decades of selfless service. Yes, it was his job and he got paid for it, but in so many ways, he went above and beyond in many facets, and I can share one of them with you. As my sons had started into the school district, in fact, actually before that, and they would start to achieve things in places like 4-H or Scouts. And if there was an article in the newspaper, he would clip that article out and he would mail it to me. Later on, when he actually got to knew my, got to know my sons and they continued to be recognized, he would actually call me and ask to talk to the boys and congratulate them. He even wants the fires to write a recommendation letter personally for my son Ben for the National Honor Society. And in keeping with what seems to be a precedent and a tradition in the district, that we have named at least three of the school buildings after long-serving administrators, board members, I would like to propose, and I would ask, that the administration and this board seriously give consideration to the notion of naming a school building after James P. Kalis. We have two, two elementary schools that he was very instrumental in bringing them into reality. Yes, they have a name, but so did Auburn Road Junior High School, and it was renamed LeMuth Middle School, okay? So in that tradition, I would ask that due consideration be given to renaming either Parkside Elementary or Riverview Elementary as James P. Kalis Memorial Elementary School, okay? I, I think that the nature and length of his service merits consideration of such an honorarium for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, that brings us to our consent agenda portion. First up is finance and audit.
Okay. We have several items there, and I would like to make a motion to approve items A through O. Do I have a second?
It'd be A through N.
Is it A through M?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Hold on a minute. I thought I went through that, there's M now and then. Okay. Is this O? Oh, that's, that's not.
O is the bow.
Oh, is the bow. Okay, so, I'm sorry, A through N.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I have one question about E, the signature H. There's no dollar amount in there. There's no dollar amount in there. Mr. Platko, globally, about how much is that a year?
Give me one second here.
I just read it this afternoon, but I cannot remember.
Because I'm doing another fly-out, I'll pass.
No, it just.
It's a two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, and most of that gets funded through the wellness funds we get from the state of Ohio, probably two-thirds of that is those funds.
And they execute it. We execute through them, they execute for us of the health.
We signed the contract with senior health, and they provide services.
Thank you.
All right, so, no further discussion, then Mr. Platko, will you talk?
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to personnel.
Okay, so, under personnel, motion to approve items A through E listed on the personnel agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Platko, will you take the vote?
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to Buildings and Grounds and Operations.
Make a motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds Operations Consent Agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through C. And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Is the gym divider, is that for Loomith, or where's that?
Yeah, it's the big curtain that goes.
In the middle.
We did all the other upgrades, you walk in and you see how dirty it looks.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to know where it was going.
Any further discussion? Mr. Platko, call the roll, please.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to Board of Education Updates. Does anybody have anything? I hear silence, so I would take that as a no. So, we will move to executive session, so be it resolved that the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby adjourns to executive session at 7:17 p.m. To discuss other matters required to be kept confidential by state or federal law, and the Riverside School District Board of Education hereby designates all matters discussed in this executive session as strictly confidential, and finances designation is warranted because of the status of these matters and the need to preserve confidentiality to properly conduct the business of this Board of Education. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye. Motion carried. Real quick, I will give next meeting announcements, sorry. Oh, are they on here?
Yeah.
I put it before.
Oh, I skipped it, sorry. Our next meetings, we have Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting August 6th at 7:30 a.m., Curriculum and Programming Committee meeting August 13th at 7:30 a.m., Finance and Audit and Personnel Committee meeting August 13th at 8 a.m. And our next Board of Education meeting is August 15th at 6:00 p.m. All right.